Common Council meeting to order of May 7, 2024. Roll call.
Alderman Kirkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Alderman Ritz is excused. Alderwoman Marshall.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Guzekowski.
Here.
Great. We'll stand for a pledge of allegiance. Kristi, you're the only familiar face in the audience.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just the point of housekeeping today before we get moving, I will maintain my right to vote for the as Alderman of the Fifth District. Despite the fact that we're running the meeting, so from that standpoint, approval of the minutes from April 16, 2024. The additions, corrections, notations we made to those, otherwise we'll take a motion.
Marshall moves to approve the minutes of April 16, 2024.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Great. Next section is recognition. We have four items in this section. First is a resolution of appreciation to Sandra L. Herman, retiring emergency dispatcher. Catherine, you want to read that in?
Certainly. Resolution of appreciation to Sandra L. Herman, whereas Sandra L. Herman began her employment with the city of Oak Creek on August 23, 2004, is a full-time emergency dispatcher. And whereas during her 19 years and six months of service, Sandra L. Herman has been an integral part of the police department, serving as an emergency dispatcher. And whereas Sandra L. Herman has been a valuable employee during her during her years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a great teammate for those she has worked with, and her dedication to the department. And whereas Sandra L. Herman received 14 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the two telecommunicator lifesaving awards for saving the lives of citizens by use of pre-arrival instructions and her telecommunicator award for her actions during the sick temple in 2012. Sandra L. Herman took the initial 911 phone calls of an active shooter and communicated critical information to responding officers, where she remained calm and ensured officers could stop the active assailant and provide critical care to one of our wounded officers. All of her actions have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. And whereas Sandra L. Herman conducted numerous trainings throughout the state of Wisconsin and won training on the national stage in New Orleans, LA, where she shared her experiences from the sick temple incident, allowing many others to learn from the tragic experiences and better prepare themselves for the unknowns that come with being an emergency dispatcher. And whereas Sandra L. Herman served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, notably serving as communications training officer, dispatch training unit, and mentor to new hires. Through Sandra L. Herman's tenacity and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Sandra L. Herman is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 19 years and six months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Sandra L. Herman for her years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Sandra L. Herman and her family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Sandra L. Herman, passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Catherine. I think Chief Stecker wants to say a few words.
Thank you. Chief Stecker, Oak Creek Police Department, and I just want to say a couple of things on Sandy's behalf. Definitely a dedicated employee. She's actually one of our only and our first dispatcher to retire through everything. So definitely a huge milestone, not only for herself but for the city of Oak Creek, and how much we've grown over the last 20-plus years. And Sandy is going on to enjoy retirement. I wish her the best of luck, and we're gonna miss her. Thanks.
You do. Anyone from council have a word? Just on behalf of the city, though, I want to extend my deepest appreciation for her service and wish her, obviously, very healthy and lengthy retirement. Take a motion then on item number four.
Marshall moves to adopt resolution number 12489-050724, a resolution of appreciation to Sandra L. Herman, retiring emergency dispatcher.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number five then is resolution of appreciation to Thomas E. Lundgren, retiring police officer.
Resolution of appreciation to Thomas E. Lundgren, whereas Thomas E. Lundgren began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on June 1, 1999, as a full-time police officer. And whereas during his 24 years and 10 months of service, Thomas E. Lundgren has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer and patrol sergeant. And whereas Thomas E. Lundgren has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a great teammate for those he has worked with and his dedication to the department. And whereas Thomas E. Lundgren received 26 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably is his lifesaving actions in 2005, where he and other officers saved a subject from jumping off the I-94 overpass at Ryan Road. All of his actions have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. And whereas Thomas E. Lundgren served with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, notably serving as an undercover narcotics officer on our drug unit, member of our training unit, and field training officer. Through Thomas E. Lundgren's tenacity and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Thomas E. Lundgren is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 24 years and 10 months of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Thomas E. Lundgren for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Thomas E. Lundgren and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Thomas E. Lundgren, passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2024.
Dave?
Sorry, I was trying not to put all these on the same date, but everyone wanted to retire about the same time. Tom, again, very valuable employee, was on a lot of different subunits, and one of our first undercover drug officers when we started back up our drug unit about 15 years ago. Definitely had a big heart, cared for the city, cared for his coworkers, and was probably well-known around most of us for wanting to get together and have gatherings and try to make the best he could of every shift, and especially trying to get people to gather. So I wish Tom the best of luck in his retirement and long, healthy retirement. Thank you.
What do you, council have a word? Once again, on behalf of the city, we appreciate Tom's service to the community. Obviously, a very healthy and happy retirement to him as well. Motion on item five.
Clerk moves to adopt resolution number 12491-050724, a resolution of appreciation to Thomas E. Lundgren, retiring police officer. Kirkowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Moving on, item number six, consider resolution of appreciation to Henry R. Naray, a retiring police officer.
Resolution of appreciation to Henry R. Naray, whereas Henry R. Naray began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on May 29, 2008, as a full-time police officer. And whereas during his nearly 16 years of service, Henry R. Naray has been an integral part of the police department, serving as a patrol officer. And whereas Henry R. Naray has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for the citizens of the city, and has been a great teammate for those he has worked with, and his dedication to the department and coworkers is a pillar of support through his roles on the police officer support team and career survival unit. And whereas Henry R. Naray received 17 combined departmental acknowledgements and awards. Most notably are the two lifesaving awards for saving the lives of citizens, one by rescuing and evacuating residents from a fully engulfed apartment building, and another by providing lifesaving CPR to a citizen who was pulseless behind the wheel of a car. All of his actions have impacted both the Oak Creek Police Department and the community as a whole. And whereas Henry R. Naray served his with honor, passion, and dedication on several subunits of the Oak Creek Police Department, notably serving as a crisis negotiating negotiator, successfully resolving several high-risk incidents as a member of the honor guard and as a member of our career survival unit. Henry R. Naray also served as a school resource officer, establishing a connection with the youth of Oak Creek and strengthening our connection to the community. Through Henry R. Naray's tenacity and dedication, the Oak Creek Police Department is more prepared, capable, and ready to serve the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Henry R. Naray is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing nearly 16 years of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Henry R. Naray for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the police department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Henry R. Naray and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Henry R. Naray, passed and adopted the 7th day of May, 2024.
Thank you, Catherine. David?
Evening, Chief Stecker, for the third and final time. Hank's gonna be greatly missed, and anybody that's ever had contact with Hank knows that he's a very lively individual. He brings the life to everything that's around, and tomorrow is actually his last workday, so today we were gathering and going through some of that as well, and still just as lively as ever. So he's gonna be greatly missed, and one of Hank's biggest things was his compassion, and he showed that a lot through his negotiating skills as being a crisis negotiator, but also in his career survival tasks that he took on as well for taking care of his teammates and making sure that if they ever had anything going on, he was there for them. So he will be greatly missed. We're gonna be a little less lively tomorrow, because we're gonna be missing Hank, but I wish him the best in retirement.
Thank you, chief. Anybody? Great, and once again, just to offer Henry our deepest appreciation for his service. I mean, that's a lot of experience walking out the door in a fairly short timeframe for you over there, David, so we hope you have a good hiring, a hiring scheme there in place to backfill that. So with that said, we wish Henry a very, obviously, full and happy retirement. Take a motion on item number six.
Clerk moves to adopt resolution number 12492-050724, a resolution of appreciation for Henry R. Naray, retiring police officer.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Item seven is a mayoral proclamation in National Public Works Week. Catherine, if you read that?
Certainly. National Public Works Week, May 19 through 25, advancing quality of life for all. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Oak Creek. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essentials for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest of the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Oak Creek to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Daniel J. Bukavich, mayor of the city of Oak Creek, do hereby designate the week of May 29 through 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and governmental agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, to recognize the substantial contributions that they make protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life for all, dated the 7th day of May, 2024.
And then for the public hearing section of our meeting tonight, we'll have four public hearings, actually, to try and keep things moving along. First, item number eight, conditional use permit. We're gonna consider a request submitted by Rich Hansen. City switch to A LLC for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower on the property at 1805 East College Avenue. Catherine, you want to read that in?
Certainly. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Rich Hansen, city switch to A LLC for a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower on the property at 1805 East College Avenue. Applicant is Rich Hansen, city switch to A LLC. Property owner is C and NW Trans Co. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 10, 2024.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. Heather, Kristi, who's got that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kristi Porter, Director of Community Development. The proposal before you this evening is a conditional use permit for the construction of a brand-new 95-foot-tall monopole telecommunications tower with an additional 5-foot-tall lightning rod. City switch will lease a 20-foot-by-100-foot leased area from the railroad. The property is owned by Canadian and Northwestern Railroad. The leased area will be fenced 7 feet high with barbed wire. They will have an access via an existing adjacent driveway here you can see to the east, and staff did request an access easement agreement. The pole equipment and future carrier are all leased out. An additional 20-foot-by-25-foot gravelled area will be outside the leased area. The initial tenant will be AT&amp;T Mobility, and they will have the ability to add three additional carriers which may co-locate or add on to the monopole. You can see just some visuals here. This is the leased area identified in the blue rectangle and then a street view looking south. And then just a picture of what the monopole will look like once constructed. The FAA did provide a determination of no hazard, and a waiver was received from the director of Mitchell International Airport regarding the county's height limitation zoning ordinance. So there's no concern with those. They're meeting the standard conditions and restrictions, and the plan commission recommended approval and the conditional use criteria. If the council approves, they all will be met.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Since it is a public hearing, we'll have three calls for public commentary. Remove the questions, concerns from the common council. Call number one. Anyone want to wish to speak?
Good evening. My name is Michael Long. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I don't have anything to speak unless someone has questions for me.
Appreciate you being here anyway.
Yep.
Item, call number two, public comment, questions? Call number three, seeing there is none, we'll close the public hearing then, open up to questions, comments from the council. Anything on planning, Greg, or Guzekowski that was interesting, or?
No, I think the only concern that was brought up was a question about being pretty much across the street from the airport, but they got all their approvals from the FAA and Mitchell, so.
I see, Kristi, the one item they were talking about was they seemed to have a extra gravel parcel that was kind of unexplained, or something outside the gated area. Was that finalized? Applicant shaking his head. He believes it is, but Karen may know of it in the council report.
Oh, yes, it's to the south of the leased area. Let's see here.
Yeah, that was to the south of the leased area. We have no issues or comments regarding that.
For the comments, questions, I'll entertain a motion on item number nine.
Kirkowski can make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3095, approving a conditional use permit for a telecommunications tower and associated equipment on the property at 1805 East College Avenue. Clerk seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Moving on, then, item number 10, then, is a conditional use permit. Consider request submitted by Ally Arnett, Creative Dance Studios, for a conditional use permit for an indoor health/athletic facility at the property at 7040 South 13th Street. Catherine?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Ally Arnett, Creative Dance Studios, for a conditional use permit for an indoor health/athletic facility on the property of, at 7040 South 13th Street. Applicant is Ally Arnett, Creative Dance Studios. Property owner, TDW Investment LLC. Legal description there follows. Date of notice, April 10, 2024.
Assuming that's you, Kristi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned, this proposal and application is for a conditional use permit to establish an indoor health/athletic recreational facility or dance studio within a portion of the existing multi-tenant commercial building. Property is owned B2, which does require the conditional use permit. The applicant is moving their dance studio from Carahay to Oak Creek. Creative Productions is proposing to have students ages 2 through adults. The classes will last typically 45 minutes to an hour and a half with a maximum of 15 students per class. Hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. generally. However, classes will most likely be held in the evening, afternoon and evening, 4:30 to 8:30. 15 employees will work out of this location, rotating with classes. The building was built in 1991. There are 37 parking stalls for all tenants. This use requires one space per three patrons or 15 stalls when there are three classes taking place. The night and weekend use should not affect the parking needs with the multi-tenant commercial building and the other uses in there. There will be no drop-off lanes dedicated to this particular use. The conditions and restrictions are your standard, as you can see before you, and there is no limitation with this particular conditional use permit. And if the council sees it, the conditional use criteria are before you and plan commission recommended approval.
Great, thank you. All right, since it is a public hearing, then I will call for comments or questions three times. First call. Second call. Last and final call for comments, questions. Close the public hearing. Any questions, commentary from common council? Great, then we'll move on to item number 11, then, as an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for an indoor health/athletic and recreational facility at 7040 South 13th Street.
Kirkowski can make a, is that what you're waiting on? Okay, I'm sorry. Kirkowski can make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3096, approving a conditional use permit for an indoor health/athletic recreational facility at 7040 South 13th Street. Clerk seconds. Roll call.
Alderwoman Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item 12, then, is a rezonant text amendment. Consider request submitted by Jay Craig, MSI General, to remove portions of the flood fringe district from the property at 200 West Drexel Avenue and to amend section 17.0306 sub E sub 2, chapter 17, zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code to reflect the amendment. Catherine?
Public hearing number three is to consider a request submitted by Jay Craig, MSI General, to remove portions of the FF flood fringe district from the property at 200 West Drexel Ave. And to amend section 17.0306 sub E sub 2, chapter 17, zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code to reflect the amendment. Applicant is Jay Craig, MSI General. Property owner is North Shore Bank, FSB. Legal description there follows. Date of notice was April 9, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is simply just a formality requirement for compliance with FEMA, state, and local floodplain requirements. The, this is to remove a section of the property from the flood fringe. The DNR has provided a conditional letter of map revision. Already, the official map is adopted once the DNR certifies the project. This is the North Shore Bank, which is nearly completed across the street on Drexel Avenue. There's a plan commission recommended approval, and again, it's just a formality of adding that this particular lomar is adopted in our zoning code.
Great, thank you. All right, as it is once again a public hearing, I'll make three calls for comments or questions. First call. Second call. Third call. That'll close the public hearing then. Turn over to common council. Any questions, concerns? One of this? Great, then I'll move on to item number 13, which is an ordinance then to approve a rezon of portions of the property at 200 West Drexel Avenue to reflect the flood fringe boundaries approved by FEMA and to create section 17.0306 sub E sub 2 sub B of chapter 17 zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code. Any questions, comments, discussion there? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Kirkowski can make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3097, approving a rezon of portions of the property at 200 West Drexel Avenue to reflect the flood fringe boundaries approved by FEMA and to create section 17.0306 sub E sub 2 sub B of chapter 17 zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code. Clerk seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Great, last public hearing, then, item number 14, rezonant text amendment. Consider request submitted by Brian and Tracy Koteki to remove portions of the flood fringe, flood fringe district from the properties at 1800, 1830, and 1900 East Elm Road, and to amend section 17.0306 sub E sub 2, chapter 17, zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code to reflect the amendment. Catherine?
Public hearing number four is to consider a request submitted by Brian and Tracy Koteki to remove portions of the FF flood fringe district from the properties at 1800, 1830, and 1900 East Elm Road, and to amend section 17.0306 sub E sub 2, chapter 17, zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code to reflect the amendment. Applicant is Brian and Tracy Koteki, property owner, Brian and Tracy Koteki. Legal description there follows. Date of notice is April 9, 2024.
Thank you, Catherine. Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a repeat of item number 13, a formality requirement. This actually was approved by FEMA in 2010 and just didn't really, I guess, necessarily realize that the modification needed to be made in the city zoning code as well, so to remove a portion of this property from the flood fringe, again, required for compliance with FEMA, state, and local floodplain requirements, and the plan commission recommended approval.
Great, thank you. Last public hearing, then, I'll make three calls for public commentary, questions. First call. Second call. And a third call, but that will close the public hearing then. Any comments, questions, concerns from common council? With that, we'll look at item number 15, then, which is the ordinance proving rezon portions of the properties at 1800, 1830, and 1900 East Elm Road to reflect the flood fringe boundaries approved by FEMA and amend section 17.0306 sub E sub 2 sub B of chapter 17. Any questions, concerns? Otherwise, we'll take a motion.
Marshall moves to adopt ordinance number 3098, approving a rezon of portions of the property at 1800, 1830, and 1900 East Elm Road to reflect the flood fringe boundaries approved by FEMA and to amend section 17 dot O 3 0 6 sub E sub 2 sub B of chapter 17 zoning and sign ordinance of the municipal code.
Guzekowski, second. Roll call.
Aye.
Kirkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Gail?
Aye.
All right, moving along, old business. Item number 16, this does not require a vote, but we'll just make everyone aware for the public, and mayor has automatic appointments to a couple committees. Small claims committee, Alderman Marshall serving that committee for the mayor, on the library board, Alderman Lorick will be on that committee. Library Board, Alderman Lorik will be on that committee. Item number 17, moving on, then, is consider motion to concur with mayoral appointments, Tourism, Celebrations, and Community Development Authority committees. Any discussion, questions? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion on item number 17.
Clark moves to concur with the following mayoral aldermanic appointments as listed on the report. Kukowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Great, then, moving along, then, item 18, that is the common council president, automatic appointments, just for informational purposes for the community. These are unchanged, but Personnel Finance Committee will be served by Alderman, by myself, Alderman Kirkowski, Alderman Ritz. License Committee, by myself, Alderman Kirkowski, Alderman Ritz. Steve, I think you serve as chairman of license, right?
That's correct.
Plan Commission, Alderman Kuzakowski, Alderman Lorik. Board of Health, Alderman Marshall. Emergency Management Advisory Representative, Alderman Lorik. Parks and Rec, Alderman Kuzakowski. Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, myself, Alderman Kuzakowski, Alderman Marshall. Kuzi will serve as chairman on that. New business, moving along. Item 19, then, is consider motion to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed. Any discussion, questions, concerns? Otherwise, I'll take a motion on item number 19.
Marshall moved to concur with the mayor's appointments and reappointments as follows.
Kukowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Great, item 20 is a consider resolution setting the date and time for the 2024 Board of Review. Catherine?
Yes, this is a somewhat routine item that we bring before council. It's asking you to adopt a resolution setting the date and time for the 2024 Board of Review. We will be meeting at May 13th. The board will meet beginning at 5:00 p.m., and at this meeting, they will defer to a board of hearing, they'll determine a board of review hearing date, seeing that the 2024 assessment role will not be completed on that date, and we're asking for your acknowledgement and passing of the resolution to establish the board of review timeline for 2024.
Great, thank you. Housekeeping, item generally speaking. Any discussion, questions? Otherwise, I'll take a motion on item 20.
Clark moves to adopt resolution number 12493-050724, resolution setting the date and time for the 2024 Board of Review.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Moving along, from the Treasurer's Department, item 21, then, is a motion to authorize the publication and write-off of the 2022 delinquent personal property taxes reported by the city treasurer. Sarah?
Hi, good evening, council. Thanks for having me. I'm Sarah Koschinsky, city treasurer. I'm here for our yearly ask to write off the 2022 delinquent personal property taxes. As always, we will continue collection efforts until the statute of limitations has been reached. If anybody has any questions on the businesses, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions, Sarah? Clearly, you're crystal clear, right? All right, with that said, I'll take a motion on item 21.
Kukowski make a motion to authorize publication and write-off of the 2022 delinquent personal property tax as reported by the city treasurer.
Kukowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Thanks, sir. Moving along, then, from engineering, item 22 is a motion to, consider a motion to award the 2024 road improvements unit price contract base bid, alternative one and alternative two to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, Payne and Dolan, at an estimated cost of $1,236,043, 49 cents, and authorized expenditure of up to $140,000 of ARPA funding for 2024 road improvements. Matt?
Thank you, Ken, and council. Matt Sullivan, Assistant City Administrator and City Engineer. Before you is that resolution to accept the 2024 road improvement bidding from Payne and Dolan at the lowest responsible bidder. We went through an extensive process here, again, as we always do every year, reviewing our roads, and providing a summary and list of which roads we recommend through the ARPA. ARPA then recommends to council. We did offer two alternatives to add to the project in case we did get favorable bids. This year, fortunately, we did receive very favorable bids, mainly in our asphalt courses, which then allowed us to add both alternatives to the prices and put into our contract if so desired by the council here. It's pretty, I guess, pretty clear on the agenda here that, you know, it's a good project. There's a lot of things we're doing here. We're adding about 2,600 linear feet of road with our alternatives. We're doing some different maintenance procedures as we've done in the past. We did this last one last year on Clement Avenue, which I believe received pretty good feedback from the residents and also our engineers and technicians, staff. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Anything for Matt? Great, thank you, Matt. Matt, do you recall how many feet, how many in total we're dealing with this year in our program?
Over 10,000 linear feet, quick math. With the addition of the 2,500, we're probably close to 12,000 linear feet.
We have, what, 270 miles of road?
Yeah, we have approximately 200 and, well, 300 and some odd lane mile, center lane miles.
We'll get there, right?
Yes. We're doing the best we can with the money provided. We're finding different, you know, honestly, throughout the procedures we've seen, we're finding different methods and ways to actually lengthen our ability to do more roads. That is, you know, a direct reflection on our staff, mainly Andrew Ledger, who's been researching this and going through it extensively and finding ways, being in the field with the staff, to find better ways of handling things as he sees fit, as they're discovering new ways, not only through technology, but also in the field conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Big kudos to our staff.
Once again, appreciate it. Item 22, then, we'll take a motion.
Marshall moves to award the 2024 road improvement unit price contract base bid, alternate one and alternate two, the lowest responsible, responsive responsible builder, bidder, Payne and Dolan Incorporated, at the estimated cost of $1,236,43, 43 and 49 cents, and authorize the expenditures of up to $140,000 of ARPA funding for the 2024 road improvements.
Kukowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Moving along, then, we're going to consider a resolution accepting the 2023 report, annual report for Oak Creek's WPD stormwater permit. Matt?
Thank you, Ken. Before you is a resolution to adopt our annual report for stormwater permit. We do this annually, obviously comes before you. One thing I'd like to point out here is we'll be receiving a new MS4 permit from the DNR, which is something that we haven't had. We've been basically kind of a standalone permit for the city of Oak Creek. They're doing away with that process. We went through an audit, extensive audit this last year with DNR. A lot of the things that were brought up, as far as the differences between the two permits, we've been actively engaging with the DNR on how to basically fix those and address those within our processes. Want to, once again, give our staff a lot of kudos on this, mainly Ashley Kupchinsky, who's been kind of stepping aside and taking the lead on this herself. Our new employee, Richard Graber, who has done a lot of work in the last month and a half, two months on this, trying to assist and point out areas that we can improve on. He's been working with IT to do more online and ArcGIS mapping, so we have continual data that's available. It's kind of making some really big strides from the past that we've dealt with, and it's kind of, we're starting to see the kind of fruits of their labor already within only a few months. So this is going to make our process a lot better as far as being able to manage what the DNR is requiring as we move forward. So I wanted to make sure we mention that and acknowledge those that work from the staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Matt? I know it's thrilling reading.
Right, it's important, very important, but...
I know. Appreciate the work your staff has done on that. With that, I'll take a motion on item 23.
Kukowski make a motion to adopt resolution number 12494-050724, accepting the 2023 annual report for Oak Creek's WPDES stormwater and R216 permit.
Marshall, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Moving along, then, the license committee. I see a, that time of year, lengthy list of things on that. Turn that over to item, that item over to Alderman Kirkowski for discussion or action.
Thank you, Ken. I trust everybody has had an opportunity to review the numerous items on tonight's common council report. Does anybody have any questions, cares, or concerns? All right, seeing none, Kukowski will make a motion to approve the various license requests as listed on the May 7, 2024 License Committee Report.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Fantastic. All right, moving along, spending some money. Vendor summary report, consider motion approved to May 1st, 2024 vendor summary report. Anybody questions, comments? I guess, Andrew, you'd have to be the go-to tonight. Someone had a brain on something, anything for staff? All right, with that said, then, I'll take a motion on item number 25.
Kukowski make a motion to approve the May 1st, 2024 vendor summary report in the amount of $1,012,526.2.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.
Alderwoman, Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Great, then, moving on, then, under miscellaneous, item number 26, then, is to consider a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.85, to discuss the following, A, section 19.85 sub 1, sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation and employment contract for the city administrator. B, section 19.85 sub 1, sub G, to discuss a possible settlement in the Setzer Properties MKE LLC versus City of Oak Creek. Section, item number C, section 19.85 sub 1, sub B, to consider the purchase of approximately 2.95 acres of property located at 9060 South Fifth Avenue from Union Pacific Railroad Company. Steve?
Kukowski make a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, section 19.85, to discuss the following. Section, or, A, section 19.85 sub 1, sub C, to discuss the performance evaluation and employment contract for the city administrator. B, section 19.85 sub 1, sub G, to discuss a possible settlement in Setzer Properties MKE LLC versus City of Oak Creek. C, section 19.85 sub 1, sub E, to consider the purchase of approximately 2.95 acres of property located at 9060 South Fifth Avenue from Union Pacific Railroad Company.
Clark seconds.
Thank you. Roll, roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Great, with that, we'll move into closed session and reconvene for action. You good? All right, we get doors open? All right, we'll entertain a motion and then reconvene in the open session.
Kukowski make a motion to reconvene into open session.
Kukowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman, Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Marshall.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Great, we have no action on item B. We'll take, entertain motions on items A and C.
Relative to A, Kukowski will make a motion to approve the city administrator's employment agreement effective May 7, 2024.
Clark seconds.
Roll call.